Do you have to go to Cairo?
No.
I have not, no.
All right, good evening everyone. I'm going to call meeting order standing for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you all for being here. The first part of the meeting is citizen comments. Is there any citizen that would like to address the board? All right, so now we will move on to celebrations. Adam?
Evening, board members. Celebrations for this evening. Just one website story to highlight. We've had a number of special events this month for elementary students, and actually there'll be a couple more coming up throughout the rest of the month. But just here to highlight because of, I think, the amount of work that went into them on the part of our staff to make these experiences possible. First is that Walk the School Day, which I believe has been dormant since maybe before COVID, came back through the efforts of our staff and faculty at both elementary schools as well as a lot of parent volunteers. And NISA, the Williamsburg Police Department all collaborated to make this happen. So it was a really cool event. We had students walking in from McCormick Park or from the middle school. And it was a beautiful morning and just a really fun way to start the day and promote healthy habits, nutrition, exercise. So appreciate all involved with that. Additionally, we did the second torch, Pass the Torch event at the, prior to one of our home football games. This has been spearheaded by Heather Lewis for the last two years, but also involves support from many other staff members. This is just a nice event where students get to, our senior class gets to symbolically pass the torch to the next generation of Williamson students and provide them a small token, kind of symbolizing the changing of the guard, so to speak, as the seniors prepare to exit at the end of the year and the kindergartners start their educational journey here in Williamson. So it's a really cool event. A lot of parents there. I think the kid, the little guys think it's a really cool opportunity. And the seniors actually were really into it and I think did a great job of taking responsibility and providing some great mentorship for the little ones. So really cool evening, great way to kind of start the pre-game events before the football game started. So throughout the rest of the month, there's a Hunted Forest event, student government is running over at the high school starting next weekend. And also of course our traditional Halloween parade and all the events around that holiday. So a lot going on for our elementary students here in October. Not noted on the website, but I think we've highlighted it in some other places. Niche.com or niche, I guess, depending on how you say it, comes out with their top school district ratings every year. There's some issues with, at least personally, some of the ways they formulate that. All these sites have different data points and things they look at to come up with their rankings. NICE tends to use demographic information that excuse the data, things that we can't control. But nevertheless, we did very well as normal and were rated as an A district amongst the best in the state. They also have a separate system that looks at the quality of school districts for student athletes. And we rated 28 out of 484 districts in terms of the student athlete experience. A lot of that involves student participation rates, and I think that shows the strong youth programs or middle school programs, the quality of coaching and facilities they have throughout the district. So I think a lot of things contribute to that high participation rate, which then feeds into, in part, into that overall rating. Quick note on two projects that are now officially officially done. They've been really close, but now I can see they're actually complete. And that is the fire suppression system at the high school passed its final inspection last week. So that project is now completely done. That is made possible because of the sinking fund. Took us saving up a little bit for it over the course of two years to make it happen, but that was a huge undertaking and took the entire summer from the day, the moment students left until actually even after they returned in some cases with some of the final inspections and final touches. So huge undertaking, that's complete. And the tennis facility project is now finally officially done. They caulked the last few joints in the concrete and now that is officially finished. And we're moving on to some other things. Those are celebration, oh, one more, sorry. Tennis team won their regionals, so not just qualifying for states, they won the regional and moved on to the state finals. Those are celebrations for this evening. Any questions you might have?
Any questions? All right, we do not have an education update, so just bring that to the board.
We have upcoming meetings on the 17th of November and 8th of December, 17th of November. There's a lot on the agenda, so this should probably be a longer one. Moving on to bond updates, a number of things going on, obviously, as we previewed in the past. The pace is really picking up and there's a lot of decisions being made quickly. And there's going to be a lot of things coming to the board here in rapid succession, starting pretty soon. Most notable one is that the Explorer Elementary Project is now out for bid officially. And as that bidding process concludes and we have the follow-up interviews, that will start coming to the board for approval. Hoping for good news with that, but we'll see how that plays out. Softball, as you might have noticed, when you parked out back tonight prior to the meeting, is still on pace for a mid-winter, late winter completion date, open in March. They've been telling me they think they might be able to get it done earlier than that. I guess it doesn't really matter as long as it's ready for the season to start in the spring. And then flooring, we are working, we've solidified flooring choices for Explore. It's become a little bit, the pace has slowed a little bit at the middle and the high school, trying to figure out what money we have to contribute to that project. And we're more or less looking like a menu of options now, like if we do this many rooms, it's going to cost us this much. And then looking to see if we have to take some money out of flooring and put it in some other places in the bond to cover for some potential cost overrun. So we've been really working hard on that over the last week. There's another meeting on Wednesday and there's meetings tomorrow, another meeting on Wednesday. And we're trying to have a decision made on flooring in terms of the scope of the project by Friday. So it's going to work quickly over the next four days potentially. Those are the bond updates for this evening. Any questions?
Questions? A lot more next. Thanks, Adam. We do not have board committee reports, however. There's a finance meeting that's on the books coming up as well as the maintenance center for, that's coming up. Back for, I forget what day that is, for ISOA, the first Wednesday of November, and this is the report. The fifth, so if anyone would like to attend that, let them know and I can get this on the list. Discussion items. Richard. Oh, you're excited.
How are you guys?
Doing well, thank you.
I'm glad to hear it. So over the past year or so, the social studies department at the high school has been looking to add some non-AP electives to the school. So we surveyed students and one of the classes that came up was a World War II history class where we had close to 100 students wanting to take a course like this. So I have a background in World War II history. I did research in Palau in the South Pacific, looking for MIAs from World War II and went to an institute this summer to get curriculum from USS Midway on World War II history to bring this class here. So I don't know who's clicking, but I guess we'll go. So this was a book that was given to me. It's more going to be, it's not going to be a textbook for the students, but it's a reference book for me when it comes to chronologically teaching in the class. And this was recommended by the USS Midway and a teacher there who teaches a World War II history course in Utah. And it goes through the sequence of World War II history, starting at the end of World War I, slightly before, and going all the way through to after the atomic bombs were dropped. So it has like all the way through the entire World War II. So. The units that would be covered, we would start right after the end of World War I with the rise of totalitarianism. And we would go through what caused from the Treaty of Versailles fascism, Nazism, militarism that led to the start of World War II in Europe and Asia. We would then move into the increasing of power of the Axis powers with Europe and Asia, focusing on different events that took place. And then from there, we'd go from the victory in Europe. So we'd start from Pearl Harbor and then we would also focus on the home front. And I think the next slide, it goes through, we talk about the study of genocide. So we'll talk about the Holocaust and the rape of Nanking. One thing to note, the state of Michigan actually has a requirement for six hours on Holocaust or genocide. So this would actually help fulfill that requirement. I know we already meet it, but just an additional on the genocide that we have to get six hours, I think, from middle school to high school. And then we'll talk about the aftermath and legacies of World War II. These are the standards that would be covered from US history and world history from the state of Michigan. Causes of World War II, interwar period, all of those are listed. I'm not going to go through all of them for you. And then we're going to focus on the C3 framework. We're going to do a lot of reading, communication, inquiry, research analysis, and public discourse and decision making. The group that I went to look for MIAs from World War II actually has an education program that they've reached out where they actually take case studies of still veterans or people who are missing in action from World War II, where you can look into case studies to inquire where they possibly went missing and helping them with research. So that would be part of this course as well, looking into that. And this is the depth of knowledge of the DOK levels for you as well. I think that might be it. Do you have any questions? Yeah, Chris?
So questions. So with this, is there any prerequisite for the students, they have to have the US history first or anything to that effect?
No, there would not be any restrictions on taking the class. So you could come in as a freshman and take it if you have the openness in your schedule to do so as a freshman.
Any other opportunity for students to be able, to take students in the course to the Holocaust Memorial Museum?
So that's something I would, like, when in more planning, yeah, I would like to take them to the Holocaust Museum here in Michigan. Also, out in Ipsy, they have the World War II bomber plant from, at Willow Run, that they have an aircraft museum there. That would be a really good experience as well for the kids.
I just wanted to say, I was kind of a history buff in high school and took advanced placement in history and actually got a history award. And in all my high school studies, and I did a lot of original research and all that, never once in any history class did we look at military strategies and military events in a war, other than to say there was a battle here or there was a war here, but not to get into military strategy. And it wasn't until I got into ROTC at Western and it was Military History 101. And I just like went, wow, this is a huge perspective that I missed in high school. But you're going to give it to them in high school, so.
Yeah, we'll talk about War Plan Orange, that's part of this and all of the.
I applaud you. I think it's really exciting.
Yep. Anybody else?
Any question? Do you have a text in mind?
So my plan is just to not have a textbook. It's going to be more inquiry, project-based learning. I'm going to use that as a reference book and then we'll pull primary source documents that are available on the internet as well to help teachers. So you won't have any cost added to you on this, which is also a great aspect, so.
Is the plan that this would be on the docket if approved for fall 2026?
That is the plan. So we got this, last year we were looking at this and then Adam's like, we don't have time to do this. So I got my dogs in a row this year to make sure it was in time for, to go. I think we start that in November, I believe, at the high school, where we start looking at the course catalog and what we're going to offer, so.
I'll give one.
Yeah.
Does this fulfill a social studies credit or it's just an elective?
It's just an elective, so you have to take civics as the required course and then you have to take two other social studies unless you take a higher advanced placement to get out of one of the social studies classes, so.
Erin, do you plan to have a reading list? Because there's a lot of great World War II books that are true stories that.
Yeah, Eugene Sledge and some other ones. So definitely bringing in excerpts. I do know that our English class, I think already they read Unbroken and some other books too, tying in. I do have some movies on the list too of like approval, but I don't think a whole book reading, just in the timeframe of a semester-long course, but definitely excerpts of diary entries and stuff from different books of people who lived during World War II. I also, like, one of the books I listed on there, I actually got to meet with someone whose parents were at Hart Mountain, which is an internment camp from the Japanese. And so she has all these stories of primary source of people talking about their experience. And then it comes with audiobooks of like people talking about their experience. And she helps her father fight for reparations for the Japanese. So that was a really cool experience from the institute, so bringing that into the class will be awesome as well.
We appreciate you thinking outside the box, giving your students more options, especially when it comes to social studies aspect. Talking with Adam, you might have two auditors that take the course.
He made that very clear. He's always welcome to come into the class. It should be a fun time, so. All right, thank you.
Thank you so much, Erin.
This is really well put together, the proposal. And in particular, the focus on depth of knowledge and the rigor that will be included in the course, which is very impressive, so very much support this.
Well, if anyone has any other questions, feel free to reach out to Adam. He can direct you to Erin or he can get your questions answered. But as Chris asked, this will be an option for students until next fall. So that gives Erin lots of time if approved to get ready and hopefully students will sign up. It sounds like there's interest, so I appreciate that there was a survey given out and you're taking that feedback and putting it back to the students for choice. All right, moving on to power school litigation.
So we have an opportunity to join a lawsuit in response to the power school breach that I think everyone's familiar with from last year. The interesting thing with this is, and this law firm is one that we've worked with before for other class action lawsuits the district's been involved in. Basically, it works there. They're doing all the work. Trune is assisting them with recruiting potential clients, reached out to us, and in the past we've joined in on those. The workload for central office is very significantly based on the lawsuit. This one's going to be more focused on the technology department and something that I've already talked with James Dorian about. The interesting thing about this though is that it seems like we're going to end up in a lawsuit either way. So if we don't do anything, we're still going to end up being party to a class action lawsuit regarding this. The thought is if we're proactive, like what this law firm is trying to do, and we can kind of jump ahead in line, so to speak, it might be more financially advantageous depending on how things turn out versus waiting until after that has transpired and just being party to the larger class action lawsuit that might not be as financially successful or will have more plaintiffs involved. And it's kind of, the way I understand, going to be kind of a catch-all. So the proposal, and you can read the details in your packet, would be to join with the France Law Firm as we have with these other class action lawsuits in the past. It doesn't cost us anything to join, other than the time it'll take our central office team to provide the recent information that they're looking for. And if we're not successful ultimately, there's no fee that we would pay. If we are successful, then obviously there'll be fees paid out to the law firm for their work. That would come out of our settlement though, so no financial risk in the district to join this.
So we don't know how much time potentially Betsy or somebody else in central office would take?
They tend to give an estimate of an amount of hours, but I've seen from the past that can vary significantly. So I don't know that I, it's hard to predict, but James is going to be the point person on this.
Yeah, he does say he kind of already has everything that they probably need gathered from the incident itself, so.
So it wouldn't take too much?
Based on our understanding as of right now, we don't think it's going to take too much. But what tends to happen is they'll come back and ask for more information or clarification later on. Obviously, there's two parties involved with this, right? So there's a lot of legal maneuvering and we might have to go back later and add additional documents. The benefit is James took that breach so seriously. We were getting information before, way before power school ever sent anything out. And so he's collected a lot of things, just proactively as part of his responsibilities and how seriously took that. And I think those, that information will help populate materials that they're going to look for us to submit, so. But yeah, we will lean on him for this one.
So Adam, I didn't see an estimate or ballpark figure about what, how much schools might be able to gain from participating in this. Do they have any idea?
I haven't seen that for this one.
If I remember this one right, it was like part of the whole litigation was going to be to kind of recoup staff costs that we may have invested during the leak, which were minimal for us. And like I said, James really kept track of quite a bit of that. But it'll protect us in the future if there are, like, if a student sues because of that information leak, in the future we'd be protected from that. It's kind of, I think where we were looking would be the most beneficial to participate, just that protection. Right, Heather, right now?
I'm not sure on that part, but it sounds right, I mean, you know.
I mean, I just wonder if the amount of money is worth the time involved.
I think the part that we kind of jumped on is if we're going to end up in this anyway, let's just jump ahead of line with the law firm we worked with before that's been successful for us and some of the other class action lawsuits. I mean, we had three, two have been resolved favorably for us, the other one is going to take a while. But there's zero financial risk and James felt confident that he could support this, so.
But under the contract, that number five about fees. Part A, go down to part A, under fees, was it A? A reasonable fee contingent fee is unenforceable. Anyway, I read through that like several times and it made like no sense to me. So it sounds like we might have to pay something?
Yes, so we will, if we, if the lawsuit's successful, out of our settlement, they'll take a percentage.
The contingent, that's a contingent. Well, I got that part, but I don't know, some of that I thought was confusing.
Sometimes lawyer language.
I'm not, this is not going to be like a great windfall. I mean, it's just, you know.
Not thousands of.
But it also shows we, you know, we're, this wasn't something we caused. And I think it does show that, you know, we take it seriously and, you know, we're holding power school accountable for what happened.
But did I read it right? If you don't participate, but you're still part of the class action suit, you would get benefits, but not as much as if you do participate?
That's the way we understand this, so that's why we're recommending, we kind of jump in line, so to speak, or become more proactive in terms of how we're responding.
Okay.
Any other questions? This will be up for action at the next board meeting on the 17th of November, so please give it to Adam if you have any other questions beforehand. Okay, next thing is closed session. This is a roll call to folks. Amanda, can you please take us to the roll call?
Amanda? Yes, Chris?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
And Sarah?
Yes.
Action passes in, we'll see the closed session.
All right, we will move into closed session and then when we are finished with closed session, we'll go back and finish our meeting. All right, we will move into closed session and then when we are finished with closed session, we'll go back and finish our meeting.
All right, may I please have the motion to come out of closed session?
Motion to come out of closed session.
Second. Motion by Chris, by Deb, any discussion? Amanda, can you please take us through roll call?
Amanda, yes. Chris?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
And Sarah?
Yes.
May I please have this to come out of closed session?
All right, thank you everyone. Moving on to routine action items. Can I get a motion for consent counter?
Move that the Williamson Community Schools Board of Education approve the minutes from the regular meeting on October 6, 2025 as presented.
Second.
Motion by Dave, second by Heather, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. There are no roll call items, separate action items. Can I get a motion to approve leave request?
Motion that the Williamson Community Schools Board of Education approve leave for Sarah McGill as requested.
Second.
Motion by Chris, second by Dave, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Post. Motion carries. Can I get the second motion for approved leave request?
I move that the Williamson Community Schools Board of Education approve leave for Michelle Ellis as requested.
Second.
Motion by Deb, second by Heather. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion to approve out-of-state field trips?
Move that the Williamson Community Schools Board of Education approve the high school student government out-of-state field trip as requested.
Second.
Motion by Dave, second by Chris, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion to approve board policies to add, replace, revise, and remove starting with the approval for policies to add?
Motion that the Williamson Community Schools Board of Education add board policy 7050F, instructional materials opt-out form, non-sex education, family planning, and/or reproductive health.
Second.
Motion by Chris, second by Heather, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion to approve board policies to replace?
Move that the Williamson Community Schools Board of Education replace policy 1300 meetings.
Second.
Motion by Deb, second by Heather, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion for approval of board policies to revise?
Motion that the Williamson Community Schools Board of Education revise the following board policies: 1032 board powers, general powers, 1180 board committees, 2120 responsibilities of the superintendent, 7050 instructional program and curriculum development, 7760 controversial issues and employee's speech, and 8940 student records and fur book.
Second.
Motion first, second by Dave, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Post. Motion carries. Can I get a motion for approval of board policies to remove?
Move that the Williamson Community Schools Board of Education move the following board policies: 1180-R board committees, 1316 notification to public, 1360 minutes, 1410 closed session, 4060 energy management and resource conservation policy, and 4060-R energy regulations.
Second.
Motion by Dave, second by Deb, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Review of board calls. We do not have any, I'm sorry, we do have correspondence about the Shrek musical that will be happening before our next board meeting on November 6th, 8th, and 9th. So if you are able and you want to check that out, should be a really fun musical going on by Williamson High School. Do not see any citizens in the audience, so moving on to board member reports and requests. All right, I would just say that there's a lot going on between now and our next board meeting. Like Adam said, the Halloween parade that will happen, I believe at 9:45, Wednesday morning, the 31st, that's always a good time if you're able to see the elementary students go by. There's choir band concerts going on, there's wrap-up of fall athletics and the start of winter athletics, and as well as musical and so many other things. So, a lot going on. If you could make it to some things, that would be amazing. You know, our students, families, community members always are very generous with their time, so. That's all that I have, so I will make a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I heard Heather, let's go with Heather. And second by Deb. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?